All right, the time is now 3:41 PM. I would like to call to order the meeting of Committee of the Whole for Tuesday, July 9, 2024. Madam Clerk, please, would you call the roll?
Alderwoman Switzer. Alderman Oldenburg. Alderman Combe.
Present.
Alderman Orion. Alderman Valmer. Alderwoman Velazquez.
Present.
Alderwoman Sanyay.
Present.
Alderwoman Spencer. Alderman Browning.
Present.
Alderwoman Clark Hubbard.
Here.
Alderwoman Keys. Alderwoman Tyus. Alderwoman Boyd. Alderman Aldridge.
Present.
President Green.
Present.
Alderman Oldenburg. Alderman Orion. Alderman Valmer. Alderwoman Spencer. Alderwoman Keys. Alderwoman Tyus. Alderwoman Boyd. Eight present, you have corn.
Thank you, Madam Clerk and members of the board. We will dispense with line items two and three of our agenda. At this time, I would like to entertain a motion to approve the minutes from the previous meeting on June 4.
So moved.
It's been moved by the Alderman of the Ninth, seconded by the President. And with that, we have approved the minutes from June 4. Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll? Oh, okay, well, we don't have minutes from June 4. Okay, perfect. We don't have minutes for Committee of the Whole. So this afternoon's meeting is the last of the department's presentations that we will be hearing through this process. As we will review in a few minutes, this committee has been listening to the top five priority ideas that were selected by City of St. Louis residents via the survey portal. And today, we will hear from St. Louis Public Schools Superintendent. We also have some Board of Education members present to discuss one of these remaining priority ideas: free or subsidized childcare through pre-K before and after-school programs, community education, and whatever helpful partnerships may exist that could exist between the city and the school district. We will then hear from the Board of Public Service, namely their Complete Streets Program Manager, to review our options for traffic calming and pedestrian-friendly street design, which were also top results in our survey. After the presentation, we will take questions and commentary from all the persons, followed by public testimony. We're going to start off today with remarks from Ms. Garmendia, who is Policy Director for the President's Office. She is going to give us some presentations to kind of summarize some of what is in the Citizens Lab Portal, to go over some of that data for the topics that are today, that will include both free and subsidized childcare, as well as traffic calming and pedestrian street design options.
Thank you so much, Chair Sanyay. I'll keep my remarks short, but my job here is to remind us of the work that's gone into and why we're having these hearings today. And just as a reminder, we've heard from residents in many different forms over the past year, and we're currently in the phase of work where we're holding public hearings, where we're exploring more deeply the ideas that have floated up through this process. And what have we heard so far? So as a reminder, last year, we held a kickoff survey where we asked residents about their challenges, and the number-one response that we heard from residents is that their cars have been damaged by poorly maintained roads and streets. And this is something that impacted a great number of our respondents. Forty-two percent said this is a challenge they faced, and it's something that's very universal. And so we've heard throughout the process how popular of an idea this is around both street repair, traffic calming. After this kickoff survey, we received feedback that we hadn't asked about pedestrian safety and bike safety, and there was a ton of write-in responses on that note. And but just to summarize, some of the most common challenges for St. Louisans from that kickoff survey, like we said, cart included things about streets at the one, two, three, four, five, fifth position, concerns about quality of children's education, both personally for people that they knew. Unaffordable childcare appeared on this list as well, reliable transportation as well. So these are all challenges that come through and ideas that we're hearing today. And fast forward, we had a public vote on 20 top ideas back at the beginning of the year, January, February. And as a result of those voting results, the Board of Aldermen committed to having hearings on the top five ideas, the following five. We've had hearings so far on water means, city worker pay, and the redevelopment revolving loan fund. And today will kick off some more expert testimony on the other two remaining ideas. And just to summarize, from that public vote, which had 13,000 participants, here's what we learned about kind of the education childcare space. For the idea of free or subsidized childcare for residents, this is something that was broadly popular. Thirty-eight percent of participants put a vote, at least one vote, towards this idea. It received more than 8,000 votes overall. For all participants, it came in the number-four slot. If you included the door-to-door canvassing that was done by idea champions, this would rise to number one. It was the number-one idea for participants who had household incomes under $25,000 and was still popular for those making over $100,000. Again, it was a very popular idea, the number-two idea for black participants in the vote, and number-four for white participants. It was a popular idea for residents, younger residents under the age of 25, and it was the second-most popular idea for residents of wards three, seven, and 11. I also wanted to pull out some of the data we have about the idea of supporting before and after-school care, which I know Dr. Scarlett will talk more about. But just for reference, this was still actually a well-received idea. It received votes from 36% of participants. They put less of their votes towards this, but landing at the number-10 spot. And it was also still a popular idea for residents of lower incomes, hitting at number five for them. And looking at traffic calming and pedestrian-friendly street design, again, this was one of the most popular ideas throughout this process in this public vote in February, received more than 8,000 votes. It was the number-two idea overall for all participants. In contrast, this idea was more popular among white participants than black participants. It was a more popular idea for young residents versus older residents, and it was a very popular idea for those with high incomes, but still, you know, a well-received idea for those with low incomes. So this is something that was also, we also asked people whether they're residents or non-residents. As we know, we have a lot of visitors and business owners that own in the city but may live elsewhere, and for them, it's a popular idea for both residents and non-residents. It was the number-one idea for residents of wards six, seven, eight, and nine, and the number-two idea for residents of wards five and 14. So it had broad support geographically, across income levels, race. So it's an interesting kind of confluence when you can look at who supports these ideas in different ways and take that into consideration for the RAMP settlement. But to get to the point of today, public hearings, it's our opportunity to learn more about these priority ideas, from feasibility to cost to their impact on the city fiscally, their social impact on residents, and whether other funding is available, whether there's matching funding available. So these are the things that we'll be hearing from our guests. So I'll kick it back over to Chair Sanyay. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Director Garmendia. We will dispense with line item number five, and so we will move on to line item number six. I know that they will speak at some point, but I do just want to acknowledge President Cousins and Vice President Davis, who are here with us today. I don't know if you guys will formally speak, but they'll be here if committee members have questions, but I think it's important that we acknowledge them for their presence and service. And with that, next, we will have Superintendent Scarlett, Dr. Scarlett, from St. Louis Public Schools, to present on SLPS's current early childhood education programming, other possible opportunities that we have here, and just want to again remind the committee, if you can just hold any questions until she gets through her full presentation. And Dr. Scarlett, you can begin whenever you're ready.
Good afternoon. Thank you so much, all of the distinguished Board of Aldermen for our city, our city's Board of Education, any public citizens, and just everyone part of the SLPS family. It's indeed a pleasure to have this opportunity to be able to share about some work that we would like to be able to work in partnership with our city on community schools. And so as I get started with this presentation that I'm calling Healing Centered Schools, an opportunity to create safety, learning, and healing through community schools, it makes me think, as I'm learning more about St. Louis, when I look at the city and drive through and look at communities, I see a beautiful urban planning that's happened here historically. And in the urban planning, you see schools are centered right in the middle of communities. Even though the Farragut School is closed, I think of that school being right in the center of communities, the Fanning School, just Miramar, all of these schools right in the middle of communities, because we knew even then that schools are the heart of community, and they're a place where we all converge together through public education in order to just improve our democracy and be able to do the work that we want to do together. And so it's exciting to have the opportunity to share about this. So just a few things. I just want to share that our Board declared back in August 2023, they voted on three or four different student success goal areas around third-grade reading. I know you all are familiar with our citywide literacy initiative, Literacy for the Lou, third-grade mathematics, college and career readiness, and then also an overall culture and climate and student well-being. We also have six strategic values that we look to align our resources with and really align our system with. One of them is a focus on having effective educators and leaders, ensuring that they work together, ensure that we have joyful and engaged students, authentic family and community partnership, personalized supports and innovative pathways, ensuring that we have multiple sources of data for our children, not just test scores, but holistic data, and also that we're developing college and career-ready critical thinkers. So how does this all happen? It happens by working together, that Board, our school Board in this case, but governance in general, in this case Superintendent, Leadership, Schools, Family, and Community, all working together in a strong through line to ensure that students are getting everything that they need to be successful and have barrier-free access to success. So when I think about healing-centered schools and the opportunity to create safety and learning and healing through our community schools, I think about the opportunity to ensure that schools are places where our children are thriving and that they are healthy, that they're safe, that they're engaged, supported, and challenged. And this is the legacy of this work around community schools in the city, so I'll highlight a little bit of that. So just to give a little context on the national scale, back November 2030, the Biden Administration gave out $74 million to expand full-service community schools. In fact, when Miguel Cardona came to visit our district, and Xavier Becerra, both Secretaries, they both wanted to really understand about our full-service community schools, and it was a highlight of their visit. So one of the things that I'm delighted to have had coming in as a new Superintendent is a citywide plan for education, which gave me just some sentiments of the values and interests and priorities of our entire city, not just the St. Louis public schools, residents, or, excuse me, parents and families and community members, but our broader community. And so right there in the Plan for Education, it reads that our community schools serve as a comprehensive response to our economically disenfranchised communities that are disconnected from quality educational opportunities due to systemic poverty, inequitable policies, and historical racism. These schools utilize a holistic approach to educate the whole child while also connecting family, school, and community resources. So our families, our communities spoke about for our entire city around the need for community schools and how they historically served our most economically disadvantaged and disenfranchised communities. So if we dig a little deeper into the citywide plan for education, it really speaks about integrating education and community support, that the only pathway forward for educational outcomes and overall safety and well-being, and albeit, I'll say, healing, is really through building strong connections, ensuring that school buildings are used as community centers, and ensuring equity and quality. That they wanted to ensure that students had access to high-quality academic programs, but also enrichment programs, and the holistic supports, whether there's social-emotional supports, mental health supports, and other aspects to be able to support our students in their thriving. So, community schools, I won't have you read this whole wheel, there's a lot of information here, but what we do know at the heart, and just right in the center, so I just popped it out, all students flourish in thriving school communities. We know that where there are thriving school communities, then students are doing well, and we know that, we know that for sure. So there's a few strategic objectives when you look at this model for community schools, to be able to really foster inclusive and collaborative leadership. So it's schools, communities, governance, our broader community, our partners, all working together, really enhancing student and family engagement in the partnership, ensuring that there are expanded and extended learning opportunities and support systems, a safety net of support for students to ensure that they don't fall through the cracks. And also, the importance of cultivating a culture of belonging, safety, and care, and really, in a St. Louis way, I'll say is love. So at the heart of community schools, there are a few different aspects that have historically been part of the work and that we're also pinpointing, and that we know that these are shared interests from our broader community. And you'll see here, of course, it's access to early childhood education, that early childhood education is so important, and we know that when families have access to early childhood education for their first child, then the subsequent outcomes for each of their other children that followed that eldest child, it actually increased as our families become more sophisticated and savvy with being able to navigate through and have more skills to be able to support their children. So early childhood education is absolutely vital. Having before and after-school care, and what I'd like to call this is really expanded learning opportunity, that we can accumulate so many more hours of instructional time and time for our children to learn and to have other aspects of their enrichment, if we can ensure that all students had access to before and after-school care, and also just ensuring that in community schools, that is something that all children participate in as an extension of the school day. That we have youth development, partnerships ongoing for health and for wellness, workforce development for students and adults, having post-secondary and higher education collaboration, of course, ongoing family support, and community-based organizations and partnerships. So I want to just dig in for a moment to this workforce development for students and adults, because what I was told, historically, these programs existed to help adults, families, family members, parents, maybe complete their GED, get connected to apprenticeships, study to become CNAs or LPNs, that this is long part of the history of St. Louis as a city, and is part of the fabric of our city as well. And people have good remembrance of this. As I speak with St. Louisans who have been born and raised here and grown up here, many of them have fond memories of community schools and how those schools really impacted them. So a little bit down history lane around memory lane, historically, there were 16 community education full-service schools in St. Louis. And they offered extended and expanded learning, of course, before and after-school care. Particularly, I hear people speak about latchkey, the latchkey program. Now, we call it students' self-care, but we all understand what it means to be a latchkey kid. I was one, I had the key around my neck for my family, even though I was the youngest, I was a little bit more responsible maybe than my older sister. Also, summer, summer expanded learning, summer learning, summer enrichment, summer opportunities, adult education, the Parents' Teachers Program, of course, like I spoke before, about career-connected learning and workforce development for students and for adults. Community schools of the past had, of course, early childhood education, the Head Start Program, tutoring and literacy support, social-emotional developmental supports, and they were fully staffed. They had a program director that was part of that school community, that worked in partnership with the families, with that school leader and the staff there, and other staff that worked in those programs. They worked together and just in partnership to ensure that students had all the things that they needed to be able to be successful. Then, we understand that economic instability started to take hold in our city and impacting our schools. And so in 2011, there was some defunding of our community education full-service schools. There are schools that you see noted here that job centers were closed. Now, these served over 123,000 individuals. There were so many different programs in partnership, there were events that were being had, and that was just in the year 2011, according to an article that I read. And our school district, you know, faced potential closures due to budget constraints and declining enrollment. And so these centers that once offered after-school activities, adult education and health services, really did impact our city as a whole. I hear that there were more cohesiveness, there was less youth violence, there were more instances of a family connection and support and engagement in schools when our community education schools were across our city. So if we look at the current status of our community education schools, or, excuse me, of our schools, across different schools, these are schools that you recognize. We have a list of schools that have community-based partnerships that focus on social, emotional, and mental health supports across all of these schools. What we need is to broaden access to more opportunities across our schools. And so there are resources that St. Louis Public Schools is requesting for, in partnership with the City of St. Louis, for the things that we need for each site. Now, what we've listed here are some cost estimates for staffing and for transportation, but there are other operational costs that aren't included in here. So just the staffing alone is around $430,000, but we're estimating around $500,000 for site for the additional operating costs. So I can't resist putting this picture of my dad, Reverend Menard Soper. I was at home in early June in Seattle, and he told me, he had listened to me speaking the entire week on the phone about transportation issues, and one morning, he gets up and he says, "Keesha, you know for every community problem, there's a community solution." And so he wrote it on a piece of paper, and all day long, it seemed like he kept telling me that. And even as I left to head to the airport to head out that Sunday afternoon, he said, "What did I say?" And I said, "Community problems, community solutions." And so St. Louis, we are absolutely focused on and committed to some strong areas. We have, you know, made a district commitment to supporting community schools. We've already been working in partnership with AFT 420. We had a site visit by people from Chicago to just look at some of their best practices, their current best practices, the way that they resource these things as well. Ongoing commitment to community engagement, and then just an overall commitment to health, wellness, and safety. I often say that St. Louis Public Schools cannot thrive more than our actual city, that we're the footprint, we're the roots of the city, and we're inextricably connected with each other. So we have this call of action, how do we create safety, how do we create learning, and most of all, how do we create healing through community schools as a partnership between everyone to ensure that our community addresses our problems and comes with our community solutions? Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Scarlett. President Cousins or Vice President Davis, did you all have anything you wanted to add to the presentation, or you just want to circle back around with questions? All right, excellent. Thank you so much for that presentation, Dr. Scarlett. For our next guest, we will introduce Mr. Scott Ogilvy, who is... That's not the order I have it in. Introduce Mr. Scott Ogilvy, who is the manager for the Complete Streets Program, who will present on traffic calming and how we can achieve pedestrian safety.
Yes, thank you, Chair Sanyay, President Green, and other members of the Board of Aldermen. Nice to see everyone. Is the presentation up?
I think she's working on it. One second.
While we're waiting. So yes, my name is Scott Ogilvy, Program Manager for Complete Streets, working in the city's planning and urban design agency. Also presenting today, John Kohler, who is Planning and Programming Manager for the Board of Public Service. I'll start. He's going to do about half the presentation, and I'll tick the second half. And? Great. Introductions are done, we can skip to the next slide. So I want to discuss, maybe we just go down one slide. So as Ms. Garmendia mentioned, there is obviously a tremendous opportunity with new funding available to think about the way we approach funding street roadway projects across the city. So we're going to have John talk about our current Complete Streets traffic calming design project approach, the intent of those projects, and that has changed fairly significantly over the last year, as we have a very different project mix today. We're going to talk about some of the current major projects we have funded that the city will be building over the next several years. We're going to, I'm going to walk through our current transportation funding programs that we utilize today, the types of projects we utilize them for. I'm going to talk through something we're doing right now, which is the Citywide Transportation Mobility Plan, really exciting new initiative that we're currently digging into, then talk about the opportunity with the SRAM's settlement funding, and then I think John and I are happy to do Q and A. And without further ado, John will come up and start discussing our current design approach.
Thank you, Scott. Good afternoon, Board of Aldermen and members of the Committee of the Whole. I am John Kohler, Manager of the Plan- I am John Kohler, manager of the Planning and Programming Division for the city's Board of Public Service. As we all know, the city of St. Louis has been experiencing a high rate of crashes that are resulting in alarming numbers, serious, and fatalities across the city. Many of these crashes are associated with vehicle speeds that are greatly exceeding the posted speed limit. In an attempt to combat speeding and reckless driving, various traffic calming efforts have been successfully implemented, largely as a result of Aldermanic initiatives and major federally funded projects. The city has literally implemented hundreds of speed humps throughout the city, bump outs, other traffic calming features. However, we recognize the need to have consistency in the design of these traffic calming features without and throughout the city. So in early 2023, we used $100,000 of ARPA funding to kick off the development of a standardized traffic calming engineering guideline. It took seven months to complete that project, and in December of '23, we adopted those standardized features and are now utilizing them as a reference tool for guiding our own projects and other initiatives that are funded by members of the Board of Aldermen. We, as we developed that, it just wasn't the city staff or agencies working to standardize those features. We worked closely with the Community Mobility Committee. Trailnet was an initial initiator of this traffic calming tool. We actually used their efforts to use as a baseline when we kicked off the development of our guideline. And then we coordinated with MODOT and other governmental institutions. Slide. So I want to get into the content of the traffic calming guideline. We wanted to focus on physical measures in the roadway that actually alter driving behavior. The more features you have in the roadway cause drivers of vehicles to pay more attention, slow down, there's more obstacles to navigate, and that's the premise behind traffic calming. If you have wide lanes, open areas, no competing interests, you're going to naturally want to travel faster on the road. We referenced multiple federal guidelines to help us develop a program that was unique to the city of St. Louis, but also tapped into the resources that were successful nationwide. We referenced the Federal Highway Association Administration Guidelines, Institute of Transportation Engineers, manual and uniform traffic control devices. And then we also work closely with our membership through the National Association of City Transport officials. So the goals of the traffic calming guide was to increase safety from across all modes. We want to slow those vehicles down. We want to ultimately reduce the frequency and severity of crashes. We need to design streets that are self-enforcing of traffic laws, speeds. We also want to enhance the environment and comfort level of the street. If you do these types of features, you'll make the street more livable and improve the quality of life. We increase access for all modes, for bicycling, walking and transit users. So this bottom of this slide, many of you have seen these statistics, but it demonstrates if you can slow vehicles down to, say, 23 miles an hour, and your pedestrian is struck by a vehicle traveling at that speed, there's a 10% chance that that collision would cause a fatality of that pedestrian. And that increases as you increase the speed. At 42 miles an hour, it's a 50% chance of fatality. If you get hit by a car that's going 58, it's 90% chance that it will result in a fatality. I want to go over different types of features in the guidelines. First, talk about vertical deflection. So these are features that actually will cause a, either a vertical rise when the vehicle travels over it. Many of you know, speed humps have been very successful in the city. Most people like them. We're on a mission to build out many more humps and actively programming that. We've, we haven't done a lot of speed tables, raised crosswalks. They are a little more cost-intensive because drainage is impacted, but we have utilized on some of the more major projects. Same with raised intersections. And then we also have a program for prefabricated rubber alley humps. Those are all features that will help slow down vehicles because of that rise in vertical height in the traveling surface. The next category are horizontal features. Some of the devices that are in the toolbox, and all these are detailed in that guideline, when to use them, how much they generally cost, other comments tied to them. But we've done a lot of pinned-on bump outs. That's kind of is our go-to for effective traffic calming. It's affordable, easy to implement. We build them with a drainage slot that allows water to bypass the bump out and go to, without needing to modify a drainage inlet, for example. And we've done various chokers and chicanes and lateral shifts. Louisiana Calm Streets is a great example of some of these features. We've done various types of traffic circles, many roundabouts throughout the city. We've done road lane modifications, reducing from four lanes of traffic, two in each direction, to one in each direction with the shared center turn lane. And then even parking, adding parking, modifying parking, goes back to the more visual features that will have a traffic calming effect. And we tighten on curb radius to keep vehicles from speeding as they're making turns in the... And we also, to some degree, have implemented various traffic volume tools by closing roadways, diagonal diverters, some half closures, forcing vehicles to turn right, for instance, where maybe a left-turning movement has a historical safety problem. And then other types of features that will cause directions of traffic to take an alternate route when you have designated problems with crashes in an area for example. Next. And then there's a whole set of complementary tools combined with these. We've implemented raised or a Florida League concrete cast-in-place features that can be used like a bump out at corners. You've seen some of these stones and polygon pre-casts that have been placed at various areas to help slow vehicles down. We've done pedestrian refuges where we might have a mid-block crosswalk so that pedestrians have a safe area in the middle of a roadway, and it reduces the overall length of the pedestrian crossing at an intersection or a mid-block. We have these flashing rapid beacons we've implemented throughout town that add a visual cue to drivers that there's a pedestrian wanting to cross a mid-block crosswalk. We've experimented with a lot of different striping throughout the city. We have gone more toward a continental-style rectangular block-type crossing as a standard as a result of this effort. Sidage, textured crosswalks and different types of streetscaping. Next. And this is just an example of how a traffic calm street could look like. You want to be able to incorporate both vertical and horizontal if you're really wanting to calm, say, a local street, for example. You might implement a feature every 300 to 400 feet. You might have a speed hump, and this slide shows a traffic circle and some chokers and bump outs are very effective, but it does cost money to do these features, but it is a tool and combination of tools that you could potentially use on any roadway in the city. Next. So these are just some examples that have been funded through Half-Sat Ward Capital throughout the city. This bottom left is a mid-block crosswalk near Lafayette Square and the old Vendetta Sett at Shoto in Mississippi. It's Crossing Shoto, where it's a rapid flashing beacon. The pedestrian pushes that. He can move to the center of the shared lane roadway and then hit another button if he wasn't able to make it all the way across. That's been very effective. The residents love that project. The upper right is a more simplified version of that with some pinned-on bump outs showing that drainage way. It also has a small median. That's at Washington and the Montessori School. And the bottom right is at Washington and Josephine Baker. We have painted a bump out, put some planter boxes, a new curb ramps and this rectangular, a continental-style crosswalks and curb ramps. Next. And this is one of my favorite type projects that I found to be very successful in the city with calming traffic at a very reasonable price. We've done this now, this is an example at Bates and Leona. We've done it on a series of stops at Laughborough on the south side of Coronet Park. It features pinned-on bump outs that you see in red. And we take that stop sign and pull it out in the roadway and install it right in that bump out so that drivers readily see that that's a stop location. And then we visibly stripe that crosswalk, put a stop bar there, trim back any vegetation. It just makes that compliance with vehicles stopping at a much higher rate than when that stop sign is way off to the side. Next. And here are some other types of examples funded, some of them through Ward Capital. That protected intersection at Shoto and Jefferson, that was a federally funded project tied to the I-64 reconstruction, the city's first protected intersection. The green, of course, is the protected bike facility with pedestrian markings and green for bike crossings throughout that intersection. The upper right is a median that was built near Francis Park, Donovan and Jamison. That was a huge, wide intersection, very difficult to cross. It's a pedestrian skewed intersection, and this allows much safer facility to provide for safe pedestrian crossings. And then another more decorative crosswalk at Delmar at Mid Block. Next. And I wanted to highlight the Louisiana Calm Streets pilot project. This is a federally funded project spearheaded through Alderman Kohn and Alderman Spencer. We finished this project last year. It is a variety of traffic calming. It shows how you can take a local, low-volume street and build a myriad of features, including painted bump outs, vegetated bump outs, traffic circles, sidewalk improvements, medians, speed humps. It's a great success story. We did get successful funding for Phase Two to carry that on Louisiana South from Merrimack to Coronet Park at Holly Hills. Next. And with that, I'm going to turn it back to Scott, and he'll talk about some major capital projects, funding topics, and we'll wrap it up. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, John. Yeah, I wanted to talk about some of our major projects because I think it's important to highlight, we have a lot. The city of St. Louis has a ton of really innovative, great projects currently funded that will be constructed over the next several years, but we have not always had this project volume. It's a case, you know, a decade ago, we didn't have this much, and it's potentially the case in the future that we won't have this much investment at any one particular time. But the city is working very hard on our own projects and with partners like MODOT and Graves Brothers Greenway. We have roughly, it's actually a little bit more than $300 million in already funded projects that will be constructed between now, some of them are underway, and 2027, roughly. Includes major projects like the Brickline Greenway, like the con bridge replacements, city partner projects like the Tower Grove Connector, those ARPA corridors. And I want to highlight that I think a lot of city staff has been working very hard and very effectively with MODOT to change the way we collaborate on projects that MODOT is leading in the city so that we can do things, we can do safety projects, and we can do projects that aren't just, you know, highway department projects that really focus on the fact that people live on these streets and there's communities that care very deeply about, you know, the spaces where they live. I want to talk, we can skip to the next slide. I want to talk about the core transportation funding programs that the city uses to plan, build, fund projects. Many of you will know these very well, of course, but for the public, I want to talk through them. So we're all kind of talking about the same topics. So local funding, we've got Ward Capital. We've got St. Louis Works, which is a lot like Ward Capital. We've got, sometimes we have citywide capital funding, depending on the year. And this is not an exhaustive list. There are some other programs. These are the core programs we use most often. Programs that are administered by East West Gateway, STP program, just stands for Surface Transportation Program, CMAC, Congestion Mitigation and Air Quality, TAP, Transportation Alternative Program, which is primary non-motorized federal funding program. And then there are these direct federal programs that don't go through East West Gateway that we occasionally have access to. And there's a growing list of these types of programs compared to a decade ago. So some key ones are the Raze Program, Safe Streets for All, which is fairly new, Reconnecting Communities, which is fairly new. And then sometimes we get, you know, lucky with additional funding, like the ARPA funding we have today. So with Ward Capital, it has some pluses. So the pluses are it's flexible, it can pay for a lot of different project types. It is fairly predictable on an annual basis that Alder people in the city have a rough idea of what allocation, whose allocation will be. Project delivery is relatively faster compared to those federal programs. We have local project oversight, which allows a lot of design flexibility catering the project to the specific space it's in. And Ward Capital can sometimes be used to help the local match component, where the city has to provide a portion of the funding towards those larger federal programs. St. Louis Works, another funding stream. We don't talk about it as much. We kind of lump it in with Ward Capital, but based purposes, think of it as a lot like Ward Capital. Ward Capital is limited in the sense that it is limited in amount. It is obviously split up by wards, so that can make larger projects more challenging to plan and build, especially along arterial roadways. And it has a lot of demands on it, right? It's not necessarily all-for-transportation projects. There's other things that are funded from Ward Capital. Slide. Citywide capital is really important to talk about. It can fund substantial transportation projects. It is locally administered, which is very valuable, but it is also extremely variable, right? So having citywide capital depends on the city running a budget surplus. And when the city runs a budget surplus, half goes into the capital fund, half goes into the city's reserve fund. And the capital fund is not exclusively or just for transportation projects. It's for all capital needs, parks, buildings, facilities, rolling stock, as they say, so vehicles. And so the transportation projects essentially compete internally for funding against all these other categories of needs that the city has. And I think, before we skip to the next slide, the most important thing here to emphasize is that it is variable and unpredictable. It is not a state... It is not a stable predictable funding source through the year that allows you to do predictable transportation planning. So East West Gateway programs. These programs are key. Federal government sends funding to the MPO, East West Gateway. East West Gateway administers the funding, we make our applications there. These programs can fund significant corridor projects. Really key is they provide typically 80% of the cost of those projects while the city or a partner of the city provides 20%, which we call the local match. These programs are competitive, but the city of St. Louis scores very well. We have a very good track record when we make an application of receiving funding. Close to 100% of our project applications are funded, but it's not unlimited. We are also competing against projects across the Missouri side of the region, St. Louis County, St. Charles, Franklin County, et cetera. And more funding because of the current federal transportation bill, IIJA, there is more funding in these programs than there used to be, which is an important thing to note. Some downsides to these programs, they often have extended delivery timelines, they are not suitable for small projects. Each project, each funding category has some limitations on the project type and scope, the types of things you do. And, you know, the downside is you do have to have the local match. And there have been years where just finding that local match to do a project has been a significant challenge for the city. And another downside is that sometimes there are significant constraints imposed by East West Gateway Oversight and Mohead Oversight on the types of, you know, things we can fund and design with that funding. There are also some really important federal programs, Raze, Safe Streets for All, Reconnecting Communities. These can also fund major projects. They generally provide 80% of the project cost. There is now provision that in some situations, they can provide 100% of project cost, although we haven't used that yet. They can sometimes fund more what I will call outside of the box transformative projects that are a little more ambitious than those East West Gateway funding programs. And there are more programs available than there used to be and more funding available directly from the federal government than there used to be. The downsides of these programs, which is really important to mention, are that they are extremely competitive. So you are not at all guaranteed when you make an application to receive funding, even if you have a great project. The city has submitted great projects that have not been funded very recently, but we have had success also. We have had projects funded through these programs. These are also, so the East West Gateway programs, you tend to be scored on established criteria, which is very helpful when you're putting those applications together. The direct federal programs are more discretionary, there is more judgment involved, there is politicking involved. So you don't always, even if you have a great project that scores really well, it's not always funded. And just like the East West Gateway programs, there's also often extended project timelines from application to project construction. And then quickly, other federal programs, every once in a while, they can fill some funding gaps like they are right now with the ARPA funding going into the corridor repaving and safety projects. But you cannot do consistent budgeting and transportation planning with these, you know, these times when you get lucky and you get a better allocation. So these are, these are special, we're using them very well right now, but they're absolutely not, we can't rely on them, you know, consistently in the future. Slide. So just to look at the characteristics, we do different projects with different funding sources. So Ward Capital, the local funding sources, St. Louis Works, the city does hundreds of annual projects with those funding sources. Each project tends to be very small, from a few thousand dollars to maybe a couple hundred thousand dollars. Sometimes engineering can be a significant cost for those projects, and generally those projects are directed by alderpeople or at least initiated by alderpeople because those are Ward Capital or St. Louis Works funded projects. The East West Gateway administer programs, we can typically do three to five projects a year across the different funding programs. Those tend to be $2 million up to $20 million roughly. Compton Bridge replacement is a great example of a large one coming up, and we have a high application success rate. And then those federal programs, direct programs, we may get one project award every three to five years, typically a really important, high priority project for the city, but unpredictable and, you know, inconsistent is how I would describe that. So slide. So here I've highlighted a couple things. We're going to look at that, hundreds of projects, and we're going to look at that $2 million project size on the lower project threshold, and we're going to kind of come back to the slide in a minute. But I want to jump to slide, the Transportation Mobility Plan, which is underway right now. It is, of course, ARPA funded. We are very excited to be working on this plan. The city today does not have a citywide transportation plan. That is unusual for a city like us. And so, you know, we are, we are, we're doing a lot right now, and I'm always a little hesitant to say what the plan outcomes will be because a lot of that is directed by public engagement. But we believe, some things we can maybe confidently say is that we want to build a consensus around our vision for mobility, believe that safe mobility is a right for residents, we want to be sustainable and resilient, we want healthy neighborhoods, we want the city to be connected and accessible for all people, and we want the plan ultimately to be a combination, these are contradictions of visionary but also implementable. Important in the plan outcomes, and I think we may, we can probably just jump to the next slide, actually. One more. Yeah, one more, we'll skip the timeline. Here's what I want to get to, the Safety Action Plan. So a really important part of the TNP, Transportation Mobility Plan, is the Safety Action Plan component because this is going to create a prioritized list of projects that will address where this, in locations where the city has the greatest or the poorest safety outcomes today. So these are streets, they tend to be arterial streets where we have the highest rate of crashes, the highest rate of injuries, the highest rate of fatalities, and these also tend to be the streets that it is hardest to do projects on because these arterial street projects are expensive, they are hard to do little retrofits on to really get the safety outcomes you want. You often need a big project that kind of rebuilds the street. I'll use Jefferson Avenue as an example, a recent example of that, the downtown project up to Natural Bridge, which is almost finished. That type of project scale on these arterials is what you often need to really drive better safety outcomes, to rebuild that right away so all people can use it, so it's fully accessible from end to end. And today, while we have a sense of where we have the biggest safety issues, we do not have that really as a prioritized list, you know, easy to follow, clear direction for the city on which streets and projects we should be suing. Skip to the next slide. Sorry. Okay. So, folks at home can't see this, I suppose, but I'll do my best to describe it since the slide shows down. Going back to that last slide where we talk about the local funding and the East West Gateway funding, if the, if funding, interest funding from the Rams settlement was available to transportation projects, the information we would like to provide on a good way to potentially use that funding, there we go, let's skip forward a couple slides. Skip that one. There we go. How to use this funding? Skip to the next one. So those yellow highlighted areas, once the TNP, Transportation Mobility Plan is complete, the idea would be to use this funding to pursue priorities identified in the plan. And so from, from the local funding, that might be to kind of fill in spaces where Ward Capital projects are not maybe meeting the goals within the TNP. And from, and this is a really, really important part, from the East West Gateway administered programs, it's probably increasing that minimum project size, so it's doing larger projects that are more impactful. The city traditionally has really struggled with the local match funding component, so it's 20%. So if we have $500,000 in local match, we're doing a $2.5 million project. There are times when what is really needed, and there are many places across the city where this is the case, what's really needed is a $10 million, a $20 million, a $25 million project. And to do those projects, you have to have that local match, you've got to have your three, your four, your $5 million that comes from local funding. The city has traditionally not had that in a predictable, consistent way where the city could prioritize the most important projects and match that local funding predictably to the most important projects to do. There are times when we have done projects that were good projects, but they were driven by where the local funding, where that local match funding came from, rather than being truly citywide priorities. And sometimes we needed to do bigger projects than we had the funding available to do. Next slide. So the opportunity is to implement the TNP with keeping some of that funding local and to maximize the funding we are getting through those East West Gateway administered programs so that we are doing more impactful projects in the places we need to do them, addressing the safety needs, accessibility needs across the city, driving down injury and fatality rates. Dozens of people are killed on streets every year in the city of St. Louis, thousands of people are injured. Many of those injuries and fatalities are preventable with different roadway design. But to do that design, especially on arterial streets, you need what I will just call expensive projects. Takes money to do that. With consistent local match funding, the city could much more easily identify the most important projects, increase the size and scope of those projects, communicate to the public which projects were our priorities and which ones we were going to do, how we were going to address those key safety deficiencies, and match, that last bullet point there, match the size and scope of the project to what is needed on that roadway to really drive the results we want to see. We sometimes can do that today, but there are many times when we can't, and there are many relatively unsafe roadways in St. Louis that we haven't been able to do projects on because we have not had that local match funding. Next slide. This is a hypothetical, this is not a recommendation, this is informational purposes for the Board of Aldermen. If this interest funding was available, some of the funding, it would make sense to go into roadway maintenance, pavement marking, maintenance of some of these newer features we're doing in roadway design. ADA Plan Implementation, which is really key, we have an adopted ADA Transition Plan now. We need to be pursuing projects to make the city more accessible each year, implementing that plan. So some of the funding you keep local to do those kind of spot things across the city. But a larger proportion of the funding would, I would say, should go into a predictable fund for local match to maximize what we're getting from those East West Gateway programs. We are today, sometimes leaving some money on the table with those programs where we could get bigger projects if we had more local match funding, and we could address more critical needs than we always can today. And the more predictable that funding becomes, I think, the easier it will be for the city to hit those priorities, hit those priority projects, and I think in many cases, meet the desires of residents who, you know, experience those unsafe conditions and are seeking improvements. I think I already summarized, so we'll leave that there. And I think that's the end of our presentation. John and I are happy to answer questions if there's time for that.
Thank you. That is, thank you for your all's presentation, for the great thorough detail into the projects. Really appreciate that from both Dr. Scarlett and from you all. We're going to go to line item number eight and just move a couple of things around and move to the Board of Aldermen discussion. So I did this very intentionally with our agenda today. I wanted both of our presenters to go back and forth because I think a question I definitely have or hope that comes up at some point is, you know, if we're talking about a citywide mobility program and talking about citywide transportation, I'm very curious about what the conversation has been like between our public school district, SOPS, and the current mobility program. I think a lot of the issues that have been mentioned, whether it's pedestrian safety or transportation issues in general, are very relevant to the school district, and we're not all often in the same room. So I wanted to have you all go back and forth so that we could at least, you know, that would be something I'm curious about. Has anyone from the school district been involved in these conversations? Have we talked about some interesting things there? And as we discussed Rams settlement funds and how we'll move forward, this is an opportunity to be innovative with addressing our problems. I think the transportation problem of knowing when you're talking about mobility, kids and families have to be able to get to and from schools, especially as you expand programs, I think makes a lot of sense. So I'll hold my questions and get into the Board of Aldermen discussion, but I wanted to kind of create that framework and just encourage my colleagues to really think about the collaboration that can exist between these us two entities because ultimately, population and all these issues that we have, safety, people look at, is the school district thriving when they're picking their homes and picking where they're going to start their families? So they're very relevant to each other. It just would encourage us to consider those types of collaborations or what we don't see and what we might need to discuss and start to get on that route. And with that, Alderman Cohn, in order of seniority, I'll go down the list of Board of Aldermen. Alderman Boyd, did you have a specific question or did you want to go in your list of seniority? I just see your hand raised. I'm sorry, you're on mute.
I have several questions, and they are toward SLPS and for traffic, the street, Scott and John.
Okay, perfect. We'll just go in order, but that means you'll be coming soon. Alderman Cohn, are you still online? All right, then we will go, is Alderman Spencer online? Alderwoman of the eighth, you may proceed.
You may proceed.
Thank you all, thank you, Madam Chair. I don't have any questions at this time. I found the presentation's very informative.
Excellent, thank you. And Alderwoman Boyd?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I found the presentation very eye opening and lighting, and I hope the public is listening to this presentation in regards to the streets and their whole transportation project. Because first of all, I want to, I'm very concerned because it seems like all the projects are south of St. Louis, it's not north. And there have been projects that have been for north, and I'm just curious on, when someone tells you it's shovel ready, when does it shovel? When does the shovel drop to start the project? And so that's my concern in regards to our community because just like people feel that the south quarter is very critical and they have those issues, we have the same issues in north, but it's no projects that are leaning toward us. But this new project that you have, it seems that the north quarter is going to have to wait again, longer, until now you get it together so we can be able to be serviced in our communities. So do you have any idea of when these projects will lean toward the north quarter because now we're hearing 2025 that this stuff will start? But all these other projects have went over in south St. Louis and they've been, they have the work done and we're still waiting. So do you all have an approximate idea of when that will come to the north quarter?
Thank you, Alderwoman Boyd, for that question. As Scott alluded... As Scott eluded, oftentimes, when a project is federally funded, on the average, it takes from four to seven years from the initial time that the application is submitted to the project is completed. And the South is no different than the North. Various types of projects take longer. The Louisiana project took in the neighborhood of nine years to complete, one of the ones that I showcased. Regarding the distribution of projects, we are very strategic on the distribution on a transportation equity basis, which projects we pursue. We actually have a myriad of North Side transportation federally funded projects that are in the works, and we have publicized that, some of that information on our Board of Public Service website. We are diligently moving toward getting the obligation of the construction funding for several in the North Side, including your Goodfellow CMAC job. All these ARPA-funded jobs were under a very tight timeline to be under contract by this year, by the end of 2024. So they are challenging because you have all these additional review processes by MODAT, by federal highways, and the timelines that funding is available for each phase through East West Gateway. Design is one year, right-of-way is a different year, construction or phase and even subsequent years. But we are working very hard and diligently to implement these as fast as we can.
And so I guess, I think, thank you, John, for that. But I guess the issue, you're saying that now, you're speaking on that, but when, I guess the frustration I have is when you tell residents to have the listing session project, have the listing sessions, have the people come to the community, you don't tell them that part. So you don't tell them that when they are granted an award for a project in '16, that it won't be into reality until '25 or '26. Because once you tell them that project has been okay and it's shovel-ready, they're looking for things to happen because they put a lot of work into that. And so I think in the future, you all need to really be out there in the community and educate the community when you're getting them involved, maybe in other areas, people already know the process. But in our communities, our people don't know the process and how things work. And so you tell them it's shovel-ready, they're looking for things to happen expediently. They're not looking for you to come back and tell them, oh, it's going to take three or four more years. Maybe Alderman Shane and Alderwoman Spencer, it took them seven years to do that project. But you couldn't tell people the first time that they experienced doing something like that, that it's going to take seven years. You should, that shouldn't be a conversation you should have upfront to let people know. It's going to take a while for this to go through. And so that was, that's my frustration. And then, go ahead, I'm sorry.
I was just going to comment on that. You bring up a good point on a certain type of project, and specifically the Goodfellow Traffic Calming. That was a study that the Board of Public Service undertook, as many other studies. And when we present to the public on an unfunded study, we try to make it very clear that at the time that we present, and in particular Goodfellow, we didn't have a plan for funding what was going to happen on Goodfellow. And hopefully, it was relayed that we still need to cobble together funding. And good news, we were able to get ARPA funding to do what was included in the Goodfellow plan. But that's a common dilemma when we do traffic studies. They're unfunded at the time that the study is complete, and we need to continue to advocate and find money. And this is a great example of how if we have a reliable funding source through this program, we could allocate appropriate transportation funding to implement what's being recommended in a study. That's all I have.
Okay. And then my other question, what happens when funding ends from the CDBG? What happens then in regards to projects?
Do you mean ARPA funding or federal?
Uh huh.
So that is a finite dollar amount. We received, I want to say about $43 million for transportation-related on the five corridors, 10 hotspot intersections, and some of the traffic studies that were done over the years. We are also under the timeline, by December 31 of '26, we have to expend all of the ARPA money. So that's a message that you can get to your constituents. We have to be under contract this year to build these, and we have to complete them in two years or we will lose ARPA money. And a lot of our manpower resources, our consultants that we've hired are working very hard to make, meet those deadlines because we, of course, don't want to lose any of that.
And so, and thank you for answering it, John. I appreciate that. And so, and I'm not going to say that to my residents because I'm at a point, until they see something dropping, a shovel, a something, to let them know that this project, any project is moving forward. Because between the MODAT project and the Goodfellow project, I am not going to embarrass myself continuously to promise these people that these things will happen, and nothing comes to reality to them. And our community has waited so long for services to come over on our side in regards to the traffic calming and streamlining the traffic and helping. And as Scott presented stuff in regards to boulders and stuff that we've never seen and it's never been brought to my attention, I can't speak for any other Alderperson. But half of that stuff that he has there that he was talking about, I've never heard of it, never seen it, he's never presented it to me. And we have those issues in our community. We have drastic issues in our community that are killing people just by crossing the street. And so it would have been very nice if he had presented some of those ideas to say, maybe you can use this in your community to help deter some of these things that's going on to jeopardize the safety of the people in your community. So that's why I'll for your presentation.
I'm glad you brought that up. I did want to remind all the Aldermen that we do have that traffic calming guideline on the BPS website that has all those tools and how to apply them. So any constituents that's looking for more information on traffic calming, you could refer them to that link that I shared you earlier this year, and I could send it to you again if you don't have it readily available. But that's a great reference to.
Thank you. And so my question, Madam Chair, is to St. Louis Public Schools in regards to their community schools.
President Cousins and Vice President Davis are here.
So do you currently have a community education centers in existence that are actually working in the schools?
Dr. Scarlett is online as well.
Absolutely. Alderwoman Boyd, you know, contrary to what was stated before, we do have full-service schools that are actually functioning. At Yate Men, we actually have multiple programs going on, and we've actually been partnering with Little Bit Foundation and various programs within some of our schools. The challenge that we've had, I think Dr. Scarlett kind of presented on, was when the funding was cut, we had to pull back some of the services in 2012. We don't have the 16 services throughout the schools we had in the past. We have them now. I think, Dr. Scarlett, you can quote me if I'm right or wrong, I think we have them in six schools now. But we still do have full-service schools still functioning. We just don't have them at the magnitude that we've had in the.
Okay. And so my other question, do you agree, and so you being a product of that community, when it was the highest murder rate in the city, that those community education centers were contributed to reducing the crime, as Dr. Scarlett stated? And no offense to Dr. Scarlett, because she wasn't here at that time, but at the time that the crime was so high, without those community schools, we wouldn't have been able to get those crime numbers down. Am I correct?
Yes. Once again, Alderwoman Boyd, I was a product. I actually was employed at the community ed center at Wall Bridge. That neighborhood at one point was known as Murderville. It was the highest crime rate back then. We came in, the community ed school was there. We were able to reduce crime, I want to say, by 80%. Not only were we able to bring the community ed schools within that area, we were doing drug marches and various things where we were able to bring homes and housing into that community and bring vital resources to that neighborhood and really transform that neighborhood. And I think, and I know pretty much based on the presentation that you heard Dr. Scarlett just do, that it really transformed because that community ed center was the heart, and that school was the heart of that community that helped transform the needs and resources that the community needed.
Okay. Thank you so much, and thank you all for your presentation.
Thank you.
Thank you. I think in order of presidents, Alderwoman Clark Hubbard.
I don't have any additional questions, just thanking both groups for the presentations. I've shared them already, they've been very informational. And Mr. Cohnler, thank you. I look forward to seeing you in the tent ward at the end of the month. This will be a good prelude that I can share to bring constituents up to speed just on the process overall. So again, thank you both, and I look forward to hearing the rest of the presentation.
Thank you, Alderwoman. I think Alderwoman Schweitzer had to leave us. Was Alderwoman Keys on the call? Okay, Alderwoman Velasquez.
I don't have any questions at this time. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderwoman Alderman Browning.
Thank you. So I'm not sure who with the public schools or the school board this question would be for, but I was wondering, you spoke generally to community schools and the benefits they bring. I was wondering how the RAM settlement money might play into assisting the schools or what kind of programs it could be used for? Is that, is there a mechanism where we could use that money? And if so, where do you think that would be most beneficial and what amount would that be? It's a multi-part question.
Yeah, thank you, Alderman Browning. I think when we were looking at this, we were saying that we don't necessarily need to recreate the wheel since we look, since 1968 to 2014, the city and the school district partnered with this and shared the funding responsibilities for it. The difference between the community school model we're talking about and the full-service community schools that we currently have is the full-service community schools are focused on the students and the families enrolled in those specific schools, whereas the community ed model that we used to have and the community school models that we're talking about around the nation are really for the entire community. So, you know, the students may be enrolled in the school during the day. At the end of the day, that school is open up for the entire community, no matter what school you go to, whether or not, you know, you're a senior citizen or whatever. So in terms of the funding mechanism, we would see that, like the previous block grant or the community violence programs, that would just be a cost-sharing responsibility. So, you know, there's ultimate possibilities for how we can do it. And if you look at community school models across the country, the community drives it. So not just the community as a whole, but the neighborhood drives it. So that whole sort of generic list of services that Dr. Scarlett went over, that's going to be decided by, well, what does that community need? So some communities may need resources for English language learners and their families. Others may need health resources. Others may need the workforce development. So that would be driven by that. But in terms of the cost-sharing, it would just be kind of going back to the way things used to be.
Thank you. That's really helpful, and I like the idea a lot. I appreciate that answer. My other questions are for the street side of things. My question is if there was, there's a mention of matching funds and being able to create a consistent and predictable source of money to routinely match opportunities. You spoke a little to the amount, but if you could revisit that, what amount do you think would be helpful from, and how do you see that coming from the RAM settlement funding?
Sure. So I think the idea presented to us that we were responding to is sort of an annual interest-based funding allocation from, you know, interest earned off that RAM settlement lump sum. So within the confines of that, the numbers we were presented with were, that number could be between $6 and $12 million. Would it be possible for the city to spend all of that $12 million each year on transportation items? It certainly would be. If we're thinking about, you know, on the other end, what is sort of like the minimum amount that might be meaningful, I think that's maybe in the, like, $2 million a year range, where if you had that, that funding available for the local match, that translates into one, if it's additional funding compared to what is there now, that potentially translates into something like one additional $10 million transportation project a year, which is significant. It's going to vary a little bit every year, you know, but that type of scale. I think if it goes below that, we would be limiting ourselves in terms of project scope and impact.
And who would be handling those funds? Would it be, would that be done via planning? Would that be done via BPS?
It wouldn't be done via planning. So this is a little speculation, but, you know, there already exists a capital committee that allocates capital funds. They make allocations to transportation funds as well as other types of capital projects. That is, that is one idea. It's also an idea, you know, it could just be in an annual budget potentially as local match funding. I don't want to speculate on that too much, but I think the key thing is pairing the project that it funds to something like the Safety Action Plan. So you identify the priorities in the Safety Action Plan, this street needs the most help. You apply that local match funding to that project, and then you're building the improvements that make that street safer, whereas you might not have been able to do that before because you didn't have the local match funding to the project.
Thank you for that answer. I think, I really like the idea of trying to address these projects based on need and where the, where the injuries are occurring. You know, we have the statistics to back these things up, but we don't often see projects that are responsive to some of the more dangerous corridors. Now, ARPA funds have provided us this opportunity to address, and we are finally addressing the top 10 most dangerous corridors, but as we all know, there's another, you know, 10 after that, and another 10 after that. And as we continue to see our environment change, I think we face new threats on our roads. And I want to make sure, like, for instance, the use of cell phones, that I think has led to a lot of distracted driving, where road design can actually really help get drivers to pay more attention to certain elements. I think it was mentioned, when the stop sign is out a little farther into the road, there's a much higher stop right to that stop sign. I'm curious if the matching funds in our current system are often not there. You talked about the different funding sources in Ward Capital and St. Louis Works. One of the disadvantages that I think exists that you did not mention was how siloed that is, how under the control of each individual Alder, it might be hard to start a project and get matching funds for that project if that Alder isn't interested in traffic safety. Is that part of the reason, do you think, that we don't really see an equitable approach to our streets currently?
I think there's just an inherent difficulty with Ward Capital projects on major arterials. It goes even beyond, you know, what the interest or priorities on Alderperson is. It's just often not an adequate source of funding locally to do the types of impactful projects that are sometimes needed on arterial streets. that are sometimes needed on arterial streets. Arterial streets do not lend themselves to small projects. They really lend themselves to big, significant projects and they lend themselves towards a citywide prioritization that, as I mentioned before, thinks about safety, also thinks about the physical condition of the street. We have some streets in St. Louis that are in very bad physical condition or aging poorly. And the city makes those priorities. The city, you know, provides that local match and you work through in kind of a logical way, you know, the places with the worst safety record and hopefully make improvements and then work your way down the list each year.
And I think that has a huge potential to make our streets a lot safer. I'm going to ask you this question even though I know the answer to it. Do you know off the top of your head the improvements that MoDOT did to the Natural Bridge corridor? Do you know off the top of your head the reduction in injuries and deaths that occurred after those improvements were made?
In the segments with, where the median was constructed and there wasn't a median constructed for the whole corridor, the safety improvements were very significant. There was a notable, there has been a notable decrease in serious injuries and fatalities. But I would even highlight that that's not a perfect project because it was limited in funding. It was, the amount of funding available was not really adequate to meet the full scope and need of what could have been built there with more funding. And I think the city really appreciates that MoDOT brought, you know, safety funding to the table for that project. But I don't want to use that project as the example of what we might do in other places because I think we can do projects that holistically sort of meet the needs of the community and address the best roadway designs that can probably exceed what was achieved with that project.
Thank you. I think it's really, that distinction you made is really important because it could have been better. But even what was done there, and I do like to use it as an example just because I think it's an example of how a change in roadway design can lead to a very significant change in the result we see when it comes to people's safety. It was a 65% decrease in injury and death. 65%, that's stunning and that wasn't even the best we could do. So when we approach these things correctly, you're not just saving lives and preventing injury, but to a family who might lose a family member, that's an income that is now there for them. Or if they sustain a life-changing injury, that's, you know, something that they might not have to deal with. And I think the statistics there speak for themselves. So I really would love to see a predictable, dependable match source so that we could do these larger projects. Because I think all of us alders feel that when we look at our major corridors and while we're very grateful for the ARPA funding that's going to help us this year, what happens next year? What happens 10 years from now when we know that these things are going to need to be improved upon, repaired and expanded on? So I really appreciate your comments and your presentation. I think it was a very, very clear picture of what we're dealing with and how we can improve that. And would love to talk with you further about, you know, how we can better fund our streets and really make that tangible difference.
Thank you, Alderman. President Green.
Thank you. All of my questions are for SLPS as Alderman Browning asked my question of our streets folks. So I'm not sure the correct person from SLPS, but I want to dive into kind of the early care and education component more as that is the, you know, as we've done our public engagement and had, you know, almost 16,000 residents log into the portal and give their viewpoints. Early care and education, you know, rose into the top of all of these things. And as Christina said at the beginning, it was the number four issue all around. I think number two issue for low-income folks in the city and number two issue for black residents in the city. And I do know that SLPS does currently offer universal pre-K, which is awesome. And so I want to dig in a little bit more to like the pre-pre-K, the zero to three. Can you talk to me a little bit about how many slots you currently hold in that zero to three range?
Hi, Alderwoman. Unfortunately, I don't have that data on the number that we hold and I'll try and get the information to you around that. So I'm taking a note about the number of slots that we hold.
Okay.
I do some enrollment numbers that they've been giving me weekly, but I would need a moment to check into what those enrollment numbers are because they would tell me sort of out of the total number of slots. So, but I would need some time to be able to pull up that information.
Okay, that would be great because it would be good to know, you know, how many zero to three slots you currently have and how many vacancies you have in those slots. So we have a better understanding of, you know, what is current capacity? How is that capacity being filled? And correct me if I'm wrong, but I think your pre-K teachers are on the same salary schedule as your K through 12 teachers. Is that correct?
I'm taking notes around all these areas. Unfortunately, I don't have that information, but quickly responding to my team and asking that. And so I'll be able to pass that information back along to you.
Dr. Scarlett, I want to come in. I don't want to leave you hanging too much. I do want to add to what President Green is saying. We do have slots for the zero, the zero to three. And I want to add, that's part of what we're saying with what we're looking for in part of this RAMS dollars and the negotiation of what we're asking. We're wanting to expand what we're having and we're willing to expand. And yes, on a question in regards to what you're saying, our pre-K teachers and our teachers that we have in regards to salary. But these are the things that we're looking and willing to in regards to why we're asking for the matching dollars with the RAMS dollars, which is why you see the budget that we presented was an approximate budget. Why we're saying what we're asking for and where we know the need is. We do hear what you're asking. We saw what the survey, the questions and the high needs. And if you look at all the high needs that all the survey from the black and brown people that we're asking for, if you look at the categories that everyone is asking for and you look at what the community ed schools are offering, it meets all of those needs. So we understand the needs, especially for the zero to three. We understand the pre-K. We understand the safety, the health, the wellness, the mental health challenges that everyone is having. We totally get it. And that's why we're asking for that match. And I think what we find is beyond unique that St. Louis Public School can bring that most people, when they're asking for RAMS dollars, that they can't do is that we have the matching dollars, just what you heard of transportation is having. Not only do we have the matching dollars, but we have the infrastructure. And what we're asking that's different is we're not saying that we want this community ed school just for St. Louis Public Schools, but we're saying we want this for all students and all residential communities and the families that need those services. So I hope that kind of helps with what you're asking.
It does. I think, you know, some of the data that would be helpful for us is just to understand, you know, the current capacity, your interest in doing more in the zero to three. You know, I saw the budget numbers on there. It was like 457,000.
427.
That seems incredibly low.
It is. And it was just that staff, yeah, just. And that's what we were saying. It was just for that staff, the staffing for that one particular facility.
Okay.
It was just the staff and it was not the overall services to operate what we know we will need, the partnerships that we will have with other nonprofits that will actually come in. But it kind of goes back to what Vice President Davis was asking, answering when Alderman Browning was asking, like, what type of services? We wouldn't know until we're kind of identifying the needs with different community ed schools because it's going to be based on each community ed schools when asked of those community ed schools. Because this community ed school north may need different type of services and resources than a community ed south may need. So that's where that budget may look a little different and the need may be a little different. That's when we talked about the different latchkey services that before and aftercare because that's where you see that head start will come in. And that's what we as a district is saying. We're willing to open it up. That's where the head start is that zero to three, you know, that age gap is different and we know that those families would need more of that resource and services that other places can't necessarily offer. And we know that has been the one challenge.
Yeah, okay, that is helpful. And I think, you know, we can follow up and try to figure out some of those, you know, if we were to expand capacity in some areas, what does that look like?
Right.
What is the cost? The Federal Reserve in St. Louis had put out a study probably about two years ago and found a 57% service gap between the amount of slots that are available in the city versus what's needed.
Right.
And so what I'm trying to, I think, get to ultimately is what is the capacity of the school district to expand in that zero to three realm to meet some of those needs? And what is our ability as a city to kind of provide some of that funding or that support to help you in expanding that? Because folks are paying $15,000 a year for childcare right now and that is insane.
Yeah, we totally agree. We totally agree. And I think what I loved about part of the presentation that Dr. Scarlett did was that last part, this is a call to action for everybody. And it is a community problem and a community solution. Something that Alderwoman Signy asked that was a huge light bulb. How is it that we were able to do a citywide education plan and there's no citywide transportation plan? Like, we have to stop working in silos and we have to start coming together and addressing the overall needs of the city as a whole. Transportation is a problem. Our streets and safety is a problem and what do we want to do about it?
Yeah.
So this is where I feel we all have our opportunity to start addressing this as a unit and come together. So I totally agree with you, President Green.
Awesome, well, thank you. And we can definitely follow up on some of that because I think as we kind of go into the next phase, really figuring out the nuts and bolts, like if we, you know, if this does all end up going into some kind of endowment and we're, you know, generating, you know, 12 to 15 million dollars a year out of it, you know.
What will it be itemized? And what will fall under that?
What does that get us in, you know, community schools and early care and education? What does that get us in terms of streets planning? What does that get us in terms of water infrastructure? Having to do that kind of cost-benefit analysis to be able to really say this is, you know, where this money can go and this is how it can help us leverage other funds in order to provide, you know, additional services and things like that.
And how it would benefit a city, the city as a whole. Absolutely.
Yeah, okay, awesome. Well, thanks so much. Those are all my questions.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, President Green. My first question is for streets. Can you talk about the current existing, what current mechanisms do we have in place for street maintenance? And I want you to be honest. So if it's not enough, if we don't really have a maintenance fund, I don't want to hear about RFPs for 2028. I asked a very specific question. What mechanisms do we have in place right now for street maintenance?
Sure, so the first thing I'll say is I work in the Planning and Urban Design Agency, not in the Streets Department, but the Streets Department, of course, is primarily maintains, does routine maintenance on the streets. And that is things like maintaining street lighting, maintaining traffic signals, maintaining pavement, all those types of things. And a lot of those services are very labor-intensive and a lot of them are also, can be materials-intensive. It's like, you know, patching potholes or, you know, repainting, re-strapping a street. I think if you ask the Streets Department that, I think all of the leadership there would say that they have a lot less staff than they used to have and there's a big impact to their capacity from the staff they don't have. They have funded positions that are unfilled right now. So they have, you know, they've been budgeted to have people, but they don't have people in a lot of those maintenance positions. And maintenance is labor-intensive. It takes people who know what they're doing out in the street, sometimes in uncomfortable position, you know, conditions to do that maintenance. Additionally, they don't have a big, they don't have their own budget for things like repaving or for signal replacements. So when those things happen, they need money from one of these other funding sources. So they need a Ward Capital allocation, a St. Louis Works allocation, a major project to come in and repave the street. They can't really do that on their own. They don't pick their own streets to resurface. If a traffic signal is old, they can, you know, duct tape and wire keep it running generally, but they can't, they don't have the funding to replace the signal until a major project comes through and replaces that traffic signal. So I think in summary, they have some resources, but I think they would absolutely say overall they face real challenges in, you know, maintaining the aging system, the aging transportation system that we have.
Thank you. It was not any shade towards yourself or to the Streets Department. I just think on top of the internal labor, the other problem that we have, and I know it's ongoing conversations, legislation, but not only do you have a shortage of work staff, you also have utility companies that follow right behind us when they're doing projects and do work that leave the streets in terrible positions, hence all of the metal plates that we have all over our roads. our roads. And we don't necessarily, we're not following behind them once they come. So you could go and you could have a repaving and you could give $200,000 to that. And within a couple of weeks or a month, the utility company can come right behind you. So I really wanted to just highlight the importance of us looking at maintenance mechanisms for our streets, not only because of staffing struggles, but also because there's ongoing work and also the need to look at holding other stakeholders and partners who do work on our streets accountable to put our streets in the same or better condition prior to doing work. And then the other thing that you highlighted that I wanted to talk about too, that I think connects to some, Alderman Brown brought up earlier, is just the huge inequity that is in traffic calming. I think to Alder Woman Boyd's point, when she talked about just kind of how long it can take for certain parts of the city to get projects, also when you're thinking about war capital, which have to fund four street, so any type of tree planting, anything that is related to greenery and Alder has to fund that out of their war capital, parks, any park that is in, you know, your ward and the seventh ward, I have seven parks, but, you know, all across the place, paving, that's another high item, 50/50 sidewalk, refuse, and then traffic comment. And I think it's inherently inequitable because, I mean, different areas have different needs. Certainly, the amount of funding that I'm giving to street paving or to parks in like gravel park is not going to be the same in Tower Grove East. I think some of the ability that I have within the seventh ward is, you know, I have a distribution of different neighborhoods that are kind of in different states. And so I can sometimes prioritize funds on neighborhoods based on their need. But I think as you get more to the north part of the city, where, I mean, you just have to go and drive and see, like, the dollars just don't go as far. So I don't think it's sometimes as limited as like an Alder's priorities. I think the dollars are not stretched the same because the needs are not the same, which is why I think it's kind of dangerous, the system we have right now, where traffic calming is reliant upon the Alder. Because even if you are an Alder who really is super passionate about traffic calming and maybe you're an expert, you you have so many things that you have to fund out of it. And especially in neighborhoods that have greater needs, it just doesn't, you know, go as far. And that impacts all of us. So I've said this before, I've heard many of my colleagues say this before, I think we really need to look at war capital as a whole. I think figuring out what we can do to get sustainable pots of money, even I would say if that means we cut some of what I get as an individual Alder, but citywide, our residents get more holistic investment, have more funds, whether it's for local or other things, is something that I really support. And it's something that I hope the the board will continue to discuss. And then my next question would be for SOPS, or the rest of my questions would be SOPS. You kind of answered it, but have you all been engaged in the transportation and mobility program or mobility plan?
Well, we've been engaged in our own transportation emergency planning. But I mean, it's so brilliant that you brought that up, Alder Woman, because that was actually a conversation that we've been having recently as of last week. You know, in our emergency transportation plans, we've brought an outside logistic experts to look at our system. And their first plan came back something that would have really saved us a lot of money, saved us a lot of time. However, when we looked at people that knew the city, they said it's unworkable because there's just too many neighborhoods, there's too many spots that are not walkable. And we know, our own transportation department knows that, you know, they've moved stops for reasons because either the neighborhood wasn't safe or just the infrastructure wasn't there. And so we've moved routing back in-house. And our routing department, our new routing department, has identified what they've called hotspots, pedestrian hotspots, either because of the neighborhood violence or because of the neighborhood infrastructure wasn't safe. So I think that, I mean, that's something that we have really just begun on an emergency basis and are going to continue in that planning. And it's brilliant to put the two entities together because, as Dr. Scarlett said, we can't be any successful, we can't be as safe as the city, but we have to work on those. But I think that's an opportunity for us to focus on those things. You know, I bother you about the principal at Lovre Chair that wants Speed Humps in front of his school. There's a great example of the public works department working with CVPA and CSMB on Arsenal to add those bus lanes. So stuff like that are just win wins for the entire community.
Absolutely. I'm just flagging that as, you know, I think that's sort of a missed opportunity. Be it whatever end, you know, I think whenever we're engaging in citywide plans and we're not at each other's tables and we are the two citywide entity, it only hurts our citywide residents. So hopefully, it's not too late to have a conversation about what it would look like to add a representative from the district to the mobility plan. Have you all give a presentation to the mobility plan? Because I know from my time as a board of education, like these things, especially as you're examining your new bus routes, especially as you're trying to address staffing challenges, school locations, where to keep them open are very, you know, tied together. So I would just put a red flag on all of us that we haven't been at the table, but a green flag for the opportunity of moving forward and hopefully addressing it. I also just wanted to highlight just that the first community school was created in 1968, and it was with both district and city fund. And what used to be a big funding source is community development block grants, which usually come through the federal government, but they're given through the city. So then the city used to give those. But I will highlight that because that ran out in December of 2014. And so I think as we have this conversation, it's important for us to think even beyond that, especially because none of us know what it would look like. And so obviously, different administrations have different priorities. We may not ever get block grants or something else again. So as a city, how do we proactively, you know, recognize sourcing funds, funds, sources of funding for these types of initiatives? And then just to give some of my colleagues, I know Alderman Brown, and you asked about some of the programs that are available, some of the programs that were most popular in previous community schools, I only know this from my board of education time, in addition to average academic tutoring, apparently dental services was something that was very, very highly used, whether that was to get a child an assessment or braces. And again, community hub will serve as identifying the need, but then helping to find sources to reach that meeting when you're talking about certain communities that suffer with disposable income, that can be a huge asset. Another thing that I thought was really fun, that I thought was offered was yoga classes. Alder Woman's wife says it's not with us, but I know she's also a yoga instructor. Maybe that's a potential collaborative opportunity, but really, again, a way to expose communities and get children access to things that maybe there's no recreation center, maybe there's no YMCA. And then also, there was a lot of parenting classes and gardening classes and things like that. And in 2024, I'm really interested in if we have this conversation, how can we tie the Office of Violence Prevention out into these community hubs? Because obviously, we're talking about crime and the Office of Violence Prevention is is aimed at that. And then you already clarified, President Cousins, I was going to ask you to just, are there matching funds available? But I do think it would be helpful if you could expound that the good thing about community schools is they're not just necessarily for SOPS children and families.
I think what was always unique and what we continue to want to do about the community ed schools is is more, and what Dr. Scarlett showed was the children are the center of it. But what we always focused on and what we knew to be true that made the community ed school successful was because it focused on the families as well. So take, and one of the, I saw a study, and I know President Green had talked about some studies, but there's a study that showed, imagine I'm a younger or older sibling, and I go to the high school, and I get up in the morning and I have to drop my younger sibling off at Latchkey or the Early Childhood Development. I drop him off at Wall Bridge, six o'clock in the morning, I can hang out before my bus come. My bus comes, picks me up, I drop my sibling off, my other sibling is at Wall Bridge Regular School. Or guess what? My other sibling may go to one of the Catholic schools in the neighborhood. So I can drop that kid off at the Catholic school. I go to high school. After I finish high school, I come back to the community ed center. My kid, my sibling that was in preschool is now in in the after school program. The kid that's at the Catholic school, they're coming, you know, back to the community ed, to the aftercare program. We all got something to eat. After we get something to eat, we're all able to do our homework. After we're doing our homework, we got sports activities. Okay? My mom or my uncle JoJo or Bobby or whoever may need to get a GED class going on, or we got a CTE program. It's so many multiple things that's happening in this community ed school they have access to that they would not ordinarily be able to do. But it's not just that kid that go to Wall Bridge. It's the whole family that whatever resources that they necessarily need at that building, they have it. They don't have to ride the bus downtown. They don't have to figure out how do they go here or there. They have everything that they need in this building that we're able to offer them in this community. Now, school is out, after school is closed, it's seven o'clock, mom has got off work, mom's coming home. Latchkey, remember? I get to go home. All I have to worry about as a mom is John and his siblings coming home, taking a shower, going to bed, getting up the next morning. That's what community is about. That's what we're trying to bring back. It reduced crime, we created a safe haven. This is what we're trying to change. I heard the programs that you were talking about, Alder Woman Sanye, but what we also did that was different, we created athletic programs. So if you got a community school north, you got a community school midtown, you got a community school south, they started competing against each other. Now you creating healthy athletic environments for each school, each kid to be a part of, something to look forward to, something safe. That's what we lost. And this is what we're trying to bring back. It's not just about one single district, this is about everybody. And how do we change the game? Community problems, community solutions. Thank you.
Absolutely. Thank you. And I don't, I know you can't, you might not have the numbers, but I do think to President Green's question, I know we heard all the time about board of education, about the waitlist. So I was just wondering if someone could talk about the waitlist that exists with SOPS's current Early Childhood Education Program?
For pre-K, to my knowledge, the last couple of years, there's only waitlist on school sticks for grade, for three-year-olds. So there's pre-K in every elementary school across the city. We've got three pre-K centers, Washington Montessori, Wilkinson, and Sticks. And there's only been a waitlist for that three-year-old classroom, especially past the pandemic. So there's plenty of room in the pre-K programs.
Excellent. And what I was thinking when you were talking, President Cousins, I know that something that I thought was a good, that the city did do is we were experimenting with like creating hubs in certain areas for downtown children. But I think this is an interesting opportunity because it is not, it wouldn't be in one specific place. It wouldn't be, you know, the city needed to find sources in certain seasons. It would be sustainable, regular program, and where you wouldn't have to find a community center to stand up and do programming ongoing. And then my last question that you kind of touched on, but I know we have a students transition office, you know, I always talk about that 20% of our kids are unhoused. And so the connection between like getting those services to that population and to those families and kids is very strong. I know Principal Murray, Murray, Deidre, yes, Deidre Thomas Murray talked a lot about that, but I don't know if any of you all wanted to elaborate or talk about that.
That would be definitely the added bonus to it. Those services will be available for all of our students in transition, our students in transition, for people that don't know, or a lot of our students that are what we call couch surfing, some are living, you know, couch to couch with some family members, or some are actually on the street. So that will lean, you know, into ways for them to get resources and services as well within within the community ed centers. And like you're saying, that these community ed centers will be kind of throughout the city. So we're not going to have, like, I think now, as I stated, as Dr. Scarlett stated, we have them in six schools, and the goal will kind of expand them where we will have them in sixteen schools. And it's all year round. I think that's something else people need to understand. Our community ed schools won't be offered just doing our school year. These are all, this is an all-year-round type program and services that we offer, and it's not during school hours. That's the other thing we have to make sure people are understanding. The old community ed school model is before and after. So sometimes, I don't want to out of speak, it depends on how we brand it, but sometimes in the day when I ran community ed schools, they were open until 10 o'clock at night. So this is something, again, that can be the answer to everyone's problems when we're looking at the challenges the city is facing when it comes to what's going on with safety for all.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
I just want to thank, you know, Dr. Scarlett and Mr. Ogilvy and Mr. Kempller and all of my colleagues, again, just for you all's presence here today. I always highlight that we're the education members despite, I definitely think it's a full-time job, but it is an unpaid job. So thank you so much for being here and being present. And Dr. Scarlett, I can't imagine operating an entire district has to be quite the job, but I appreciate you making yourself available virtually, even if it's across the country. You're still here with us today. So thank you so much for being here for that today. And then I just wanted to applaud SOPS and all of you all's efforts for expanding childcare for, I feel like the thing that the school district does so well is you guys are like the face of making a dollar out of 15 cents. But hopefully, we can get you at least 30 cents to make that dollar out of at some point. And then also, just wanted to acknowledge all of the community members that have weighed in and uplifted both pedestrian and cyclist friendly and childcare options. Those were honestly three of the top options for the seventh ward, but I think those are things that we saw had interest across the entire city, across the board. And early childhood education was one that came across in every ward. And that was very popular across all classes, races, demographics, that I think is really interesting. And with that, I will move us to agenda, agenda item number seven, which is our community engagement segment. So the meeting is now open for public comment on priority challenges. The procedure to provide testimony will be fairly simple. There's a little raise your hand icon on your computer. You will raise your hand. It will show up next to your name. Only people who have a raised hand will be called upon, and the clerk will go in the best order that she can, of which you see. After you testify, we'll move you back over to the attendee list. Speakers will be called on in order of which you seen, and each speaker will have three minutes to speak. I just ask that you give your name and your ward number, and then I will have to swear you in, and then you can proceed with your public comment. And maybe we can go, if there's folks signed up in the room, maybe we can alternate. Okay, so we can start with the first person on the list.
The first speaker is Andrew.
Hi there. Can you guys hear me okay?
Yes.
Very cool.
Do you swear to affirm to tell the truth and the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Thank you. And just your name and your ward number and your three minutes.
My name's Andrew Smurker, and I live in Ward 10. And I really just want to thank the board for hearing this entire case. It's, I'm one of the 16,000 citizens that's been kind of watching it from the online board. And now, you know, I've gotten, I've had the privilege to come to the meetings and stuff. And every presentation has been not only informative, but very compelling, actually. You guys may know, I've been advocating for prioritizing the water infrastructure repair. And I think the core reason why I continue to kind of drift back to that one is that there's the shortest path to replacing the revenue that's being used because people pay the water bill. I think that's the core of the logic. I like all the projects. I think the city has a tremendous amount of needs that are all over the place. But the water is the one that I see not only being able to be used, but then that money comes back, it can be used for another project. And also, that a lot of the pipes that we'll be pulling out of the ground to replace them, they've been down there for like 100 years. So that means if we replace them, we're replacing them for 100 years. And that just continues to be like the absolute most compelling thing for me. And also, too, with some of the stuff that we heard today, where I would give some points of criticism is that it feels like the line items, it's murky of like where the exact amount of money that's being asked for and where exactly the money's going to go. Whereas when Director Scooby came, we had all of the line items and therefore bids for actual replacements. Now, they don't all need to be replaced today. So as we are starting to have the conversation of turning it into an endowment, it's not like we're going to spend the whole thing at once because, you know, the the interest is rolling over and it could be allocated annually, all that kind of stuff. But I just think it is worth it to commit to those repairs if we do. Because, you know, there's examples like Flint, and even Atlanta had their water mains break down. They were able to repair it, but it was pretty scary there for a second, you know. So I just, I want the city to feel good about the water. We already get the water, it's delicious. But that kind of thing could go wrong. And I think it's okay to look into the future with like a preventative or a, hey, they thought about this, that it would break down in advance. And and some of the other projects also seem to have some ARPA funding already. I've looked at the ARPA budget a little bit. It doesn't seem like there is as much allocated for infrastructure repair as, some of it's still up in the air. So I just think that's a contributing factor as well. But that, again, my core logic is just that the the water is replaceable revenue. It seems to be the shortest path to replacement. And that the line items are there, they're etched out, the bids are being requested. And and then again, yeah, that that, some of these repairs will be for 100 years. And that's something I'd kind of like to add on to the to the endowment conversation, is that actually, in my own personal life, through my company, I've been acquiring art pieces that I would like to potentially pair with the endowment. As of right now, they're not worth, you know, it's not a Warhol or something yet. But if these repairs are for 100 years, it could prove out to be, you know, something that's like a Warhol. And one art piece alone can wind up being worth 40 million in 50 to 100 years, you know. So I think that's why I emphasize on long-term repair, because I think there's a chance to even commit to more long-term eventually as as time proves this sort of thing out. But again, yeah, it's just been a wonderful joy to just listen to everybody of what everyone has to say. And it, it feels like all of these projects, they're not really competing with each other that much. It's just about where the priority is going to go, the order of operations of the repairs. And I think that's just awesome. And I'm really excited to see what the board winds up doing. So thank you so much for the time.
Thank you. Go to virtual, if there's someone over truly.
The next speaker is Mr. and Mrs. Alexander. Mr. and Mrs. Alexander.
Yes, hello. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, hello, everyone.
I'm just going to swear you in. Do you promise that what you're about to say is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you. You may proceed. Just your name, ward number, and three minutes.
Okay, so this is Mr. and Mrs. Alexander, longtime residents of the Jeff Vanderloo and Central West End neighborhoods, and we're in Ward 11. To the committee of the whole, honorable alderwomen and aldermen, we and other committee, community members, would like to reiterate this firm warning. If any organization asking for Ram settlement funding or for any public dollars is associated with the Opportunity Trust, the Opportunity Trust known as one of the largest local education privatizers who are already rich, and the founder boldly stated their goal is to burn down the St. Louis Public Schools, we ask that the decision makers on this committee do extensive research on this organization and other entities like them, study their strategic tactics and patterns locally and nationally. We ask that this committee will soundly disperse the Ram settlement money where it is needed most in our city, to improve the quality of life, of health and safety for our children and families in our North Side communities, and preserve our democracy. Thank you.
Thank you.
The next speaker, Mr. Davis, Matt Davis.
He just signed in. He's okay, though. That was Vice President Davis.
Okay, I'm sorry. Charles Bryson. Charles Bryson.
Do you promise that what you're about to say is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Thank you, Mr. Bryson. Your name, ward, in three minutes.
Charles Bryson, 8th Ward, representing TrailNet. So, thank you all for this gathering this afternoon. I've learned quite a bit, and also learned not as much as I'd like to. First of all, TrailNet is involved with a number of different organizations around a biking program in a number of different, some North Side, some South Side schools. And I can get you that list, Alderwoman, Sonnier, and President Green, so that you know the work that we've been doing to try to instill the issue of biking to school. And I think that's really important, because it's a culture. You know, when you look on the internet around other cities and towns and communities, and you see a bunch of kids biking to school, that's a culture. And it's a culture that we should and could produce. But there is something that's standing in the way. And that is, the discussion items were free or subsidized childcare and traffic calming and pedestrian-friendly street design. But where's the Streets Department? And why aren't they here making a presentation about what they do around street design, traffic calming, and street improvement? And I find that as we look at what we need to do in the future for the city of St. Louis, we really need to look at how do we, and you all will get this invitation soon, how do we look at the Streets Department in a different way? And how do we look at the Streets Department perhaps as a Department of Transportation, where all issues related to streets and sidewalks are presented as a whole? Having three different entities, the Streets Department, BPS, and Planning, figure out what is needed in our streets and sidewalks, has gotten us to where we are today. And so, I urge and encourage you all that when the, when the meeting takes place, to consider what's not happening now, and what can begin to happen as of July 1st, 2027, when if the voters approve of that charter change, there will be a City Department of Transportation. And it's two years that you all have to begin to think about the number of personnel, the budget, ward capital, and any other funding source, including RAM settlement, that could begin to build out that department to be what you all have talked about today. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bryson.
The next speaker online is Paula.
Hi, I'm here.
Hi, Ms. Vickers. Thank you for joining us. Do you promise that what you're about to say is the truth and the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
Yes.
Thank you, your name, ward, in three minutes.
Hi, I am Paula Vickers, and I am in the 12th Ward. I actually authored this topic with, or co-authored this topic with the intention of having conversation around childcare, specifically for St. Louis for that 0 to 36 months. I'm a mom in the 12th Ward, I have two children, one of whom is not of preschool age. And I feel like I've done thorough research in looking at all opportunities that could serve him for free, because I am a single parent, and I have not been able to find anything for 0 to 36 months for free in St. Louis City. If it were, I would love to have it, because again, as a single parent, I'm spending about half of my income towards childcare. The last time I spoke, I was met in the hallway and was told that I wouldn't have these problems if I just stayed home with my children. And I'm here to say, today I had a sick baby, and I had to stay home with my children while also working full-time, and it's not sustainable, it's not possible. I am urging us to start having conversations around what it looks like to co-parent. I myself am co-parenting, I know that sometimes the adults don't get along, but when the adults don't get along, the children suffer. And so, we have to have these conversations, what does it look like to co-parent so that all of our children are having the best opportunities for the best start to life, best start to this St. Louis that we are imagining and dreaming about? We're talking about riding bikes to school. Right now, I have neighbors that are afraid to even walk outside of their houses. So, that's not where we are right now as a city. I hope we can get there again. But right now, what does it look like to have conversations around co-parenting in the community for our children, so that they could have really everything they deserve, but also so families can be supported? Again, I've looked for everything possible for 0 to 36 months. I was a parent, I was on a waitlist for a school. Glad that I'm off that waitlist for my older child and my younger child. I was told that he would need to be three by August 1st in order to have any services. So, if those services are available, I hope that they can be shared. But right now, I feel like I'm a pretty smart woman, and I have not been able to find them. But again, I'm just hoping that at some place, us adults learn how to get along so that our children can have better outcomes.
Thank you.
The next speaker is Brother Todd.
Hello, Brother Todd.
How you doing?
Do you promise that you're going to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Affirm.
Thank you, name, ward, three minutes.
My name is Brother Todd El, I stand the 14th Ward. My alderman is Alderman Rashid Alrich. Thank you, Madam Sonnier, Alderman Brownie, and President Green for this opportunity. I do believe that revenues from the RAM settlements should definitely go towards our educational system. I think that Dr. Scarlett and President Cousin demonstrated the need, both for how it would impact not only our communities, but also public safety among our residents. And I think that not only just some of the money, but a substantial amount of revenue should go towards our educational programs, especially in light of the fact that this city of St. Louis, over the years, has been giving these rich real estate developers massive tax breaks, massive tax abatement, that's caused our schools to lose out on these revenues that could have went to our children. You know, when they gave the Harper Fund, the federal government allowed the city to do a calculation to show the losses that they lost. And as a result, the federal government was going to refund the city so they can capture those losses. I think that same kind of program and system should be used by the city of St. Louis to calculate the loss of revenue that's been given to these massive real estate developers whose children end up going to Harvard and Princeton and Yale and Columbia, where our babies end up on the streets or in the penitentiary, because they don't have enough revenues to be able to educate them in our public school system. So, I think that this Board should take seriously and look at the fact that our education system needs to be funded, not just funded, but sustainably funded, so our children can have a fair chance in this 21st century. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Todd.
The next speaker online is Tracy.
Good afternoon, or good evening at this point. My name is Tracy Fantini. I am the co-chair of the St. Louis Public Schools Parent Action Council.
Ms. Tracy, do you promise that what you're about to say is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you, you may proceed.
So, I am the parent of two SLPS students. I also serve on the Board of Education's Legislative Committee and a subcommittee addressing trauma in our schools. I just wanted to say that Dr. Scarlett's father hit the nail on the head. Community problems require community solutions. Our elected decision-makers need to take some responsibility and support St. Louis Public Schools with funding. Our students and families and our challenges don't exist in a bubble. The Board of Education is responsible for governance within SLPS, but we are all also your constituents. Therefore, our problems should be considered the city's problems, especially because we are also, we are all interconnected, and a thriving public school system is necessary to have a thriving city of St. Louis. Not only is public education the bedrock of our democracy, but we know that success in academics is related to lower crime rates. This benefits all of our citizens and only makes our fair city more attractive, a more attractive place to live. The very high cost of childcare makes it accessible for only a fraction of our families, as Ms. Vickers was talking about. Addressing the transportation emergency in SLPS increases the already very high need for free childcare before and after school, and we need additional funding to provide that. So, funding community schools can address that problem with the added benefit of serving the whole community, not just school-aged kids and families, as President Cousins pointed out. And the community school model not only improves academic outcomes for kids, but it also provides the wraparound services that can address the needs of the whole neighborhood. And we know that trauma and the trauma from crime and violence affects everybody, not just our kids, it affects our kids the most, but adults can't effectively go to work and parent, because they're suffering from PTSD also. And trauma support services are critical to community healing, as Dr. Scarlett described it. Full-service community schools also foster a sense of community and community responsibility for the success of our schools. In other words, the village. And investing RAM settlement funds in full-service community schools is an investment in the city as a whole. Thanks for your time.
Thank you.
The next speaker is Josiah.
Hello.
Hi, Josiah. Do you promise that what you're about to say is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Thank you, your name, ward, in three minutes.
Alrighty, my name's Josiah Zimmer, I live in the 7th Ward. And so, like, it seems like you guys are pretty much set on putting this into an endowment. At least, that's what everyone's leaning towards, and just using the returns on that to like, what, we're thinking like 15 million a year to go to smaller projects. But I think instead, we should make a larger investment into ourselves. People say, don't put all your eggs in one basket, but we're a city, we should be building infrastructure. That's kind of what cities do. And so, I think, yes, pedestrian-friendly street design is very important. I know that one of the other things that was in the poll was some of the money going towards the Jefferson Green Line, which that's exciting, but I think we should think bigger. I mean, Jefferson Green Line is awesome, thank you guys for supporting that, making that happen, but we should be thinking about what the next line's going to be, start planning, doing the environmental studies, working, putting the money aside for that, because at the end of the day, we need to make the city denser. I mean, we were built around a trolley network. We used to have dense, mixed-use, walkable developments. And the best way to encourage that is a transit network, specifically rail transit especially. And so, I think we should spend the majority of the RAM settlement towards playing our next rail transit line after the Jefferson Line, because this will, as I said, encourage the dense, mixed-use developments, which offer a lot higher tax return. Because if you're not dedicating all this space to personal automobiles, spending out parking lots and drive-throughs and just parking garages, wasting space, like, you cannot have a lot more tax budget, and that can go towards things like childcare, education. So, yeah, that's where I stand. Support rail transit, I really think most of this money needs to go towards that, which is obviously related to pedestrian-friendly street design. That's obviously important as well. But rail is what, like, this is our chance to really transform the city. And the Jefferson Line's already going to do that, but we need to plan the next line, like, we need a rail network again. And that's what will make St. Louis thrive. I mean, look at around the world, the best cities have rail networks, not just a few lines here and there. So, that's where I think the money should go.
Thank you, Josiah. Uh, this is a side plug, but I started a petition. You signed it?
Which one are you referring to?
I'll send it to you. It's just a petition to encourage by state to add the Russell and Jefferson stops that were cut back to it. So, if you didn't sign it already, I want to make sure I get you the link.
Absolutely.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
The next online speaker is Lisa.
Hello, I am Lisa Shear, Ward 2.
Lisa, are you going to cut your camera on?
Uh, sure.
Thank you.
I look a mess, sorry.
Oh, I disagree. Do you promise that what you're about to say is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you, your name, ward, in three minutes.
My name is Lisa Shear, and I have a childcare program in Ward 2, the Baden area. And I wanted to talk about our area a little bit. As most of you know, the city of St. Louis and my community neighborhood of Baden is already an underserved area. And the children and our childcare, we've had, we've been here for 25 years, our childcare has, and the families continue to come back to us because we are serving, you know, quality care, we go above and beyond. But I want to know, what I want you to know today is that the state of Missouri, 100% of my children are subsidized care, meaning the state provides childcare for them at a discounted rate. And the state just, we did a market rate survey, and the cities and counties of St. Louis did not get a rate increase again. And this is six years now that we didn't. We were promised one from the governor. And when all the numbers came through, we found out on the first that we didn't get that increase again. And then, we just continued to get decreases. And so, what that means for early care and education is, if, you know, we will continue to see crime, we'll continue to see all of these things progress. But right now, immediately, what it means is childcare providers are closing, childcare centers are closing. We know of one provider who, because families are not, they're not getting, there's a new system with the state, and they're not getting their childcare approved in time. And they're losing their jobs, and some of them are not able to bring children to childcare centers right now. They're being in unsafe spaces. And we do know of at least one child that is now deceased because of that situation, unfortunately. And now, that mom is without her baby. The provider is in a really, you know, terrible situation. And so, what I'm saying to you is that we're the foundation for, we're serving 0 to 5, and this is the foundation that we need. This is what changes everything for our communities. This changes, you know, our crime rate, it changes, you know, how we teach children to eat, you know, healthy foods, those kind of things. All of those things right now are what we need, why we need this funding. And so, I just thank you for the time, for your, you know, thinking about this and considering it. And if we really want to change, you know, our future and our crime rates and our city, and, you know, I love my city, this is where we start. This is really where the conversation needs to start. Thank you.
Thank you. Just a reminder to folks who are online, if you want to testify, please raise your hand. We're just trying to identify how many folks are left to testify. So, if we don't see your hand raised, we will cut it off soon here.
The last in-person speaker is Ms. Williams.
Hi, Ms. Williams. Do you promise that what you're about to say is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes.
Thank you, your name, ward, in three minutes.
Okay, so, my name is Tajay.
Okay, so my name is Tajay and I'm new to this, so I think I'm in Ward 7, but I don't know for sure. Okay, so I am a recent graduate of Hairstow. They have a MECA program that teaches you how to become business owner. And so I'm really happy about that program and I am really excited that people have voted for us to use the funds for schools so we can all have more education, free programs. But I also wanted to just highlight that I think that we should use the funds also for homelessness, the crisis that we all are dealing with. So as we are aware, that St. Louis is dealing with a huge crisis in homelessness. And I think that if we were to use the funds for mental health or some programs that could help build the mental health of individuals who are dealing with those type of things, that we would be able to see some benefits that will help the community for sure. I think that we could see that through using more free programs within the school, but also having programs that would affect the adults because the adults are, they have children that sometimes they aren't in school. So the adults, they walk around with them and if they're not able to go to school, then it's kind of hard to be able to build for the people that really would benefit off of the funds. So I would also like to say that I listened to the roads and how, I'm sorry, the gentleman who wanted to use the money for the roads. And I think that all the options are great options. I think that this is a large settlement and if we were able to disperse the funds for all the things, I think everybody could benefit off of it. But just if we could open our hearts to understand that some people can't speak for themselves and to have some way that we could speak for the ones who aren't, are not able to speak for themselves. So thank you. I appreciate it.
Thank you.
And the last online speaker is Denise.
Thank you, Ms. Denise. Ms. Denise, do you promise that what you're about to say is the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Thank you. Your name, ward, in three minutes.
My name is Denise Chisum Butler and I'm a resident of, I think it's the 12th Ward, Sharon Tyus. This is my first time participating in the board meetings. But some real concerns that I have living in Kings Highway East, especially after attending one of the CDA meeting last night and some of the information that they gave us, some of the surveys. But one thing that I realize is over in Kings Highway East, we have one of the higher, like the third highest homeownership rates over there. But we receive so little resources. I mean, if we don't have people to tow cars that have been left derelict and are endangered if some of the city lots, CDA lots, LRA lots and properties are not maintained. But also squatters are allowed to come and just terrorize the community. And it's like we are getting nothing for our, I mean, our kids can't even come home. It's like, okay, I understand that the police, we are understaffed. I think the last time I saw was like 300 or something. But I'm wondering, have we considered like maybe doing private security or something? I mean, since we have the funds from 300 officers' salaries not being there, have we even looked into an alternative where we can have somebody to at least drive through when it's time for the kids to get off the bus, going to school when they, I mean, it's like, the only way I can say it, it's like we're being infested with rats and nobody trying to get rid of any of them. I mean, the problems that have been allowed, it's like it's a red line around Kings Highway East where the police won't even come through or drive. I just would like to see some kind of participation in, from the city. I mean, for some resources. I mean, our property values have plummeted because what's been allowed to happen to us. But our taxes, we still have to pay them. And how can a squatter come and terrorize the whole community who ain't, who's not paying nothing? And we can't even get the bill to condemn, and it's condemned. I mean, I just don't understand. Like I said, I'm new to this process getting involved, but it's like we have no other. I really wish that Sharon Tyus was on because I've tried calling, I mean, and everything else, emailing and nothing. And it's very frustrating. I mean, I have senior citizens coming to me, homeowners. And of course, the families don't want to come back into the community because it's like an endless fight. When do, is this part of the process to desecrate the Kings Highway East? I don't understand how it's allowed to go on like this. I just, I just don't. And maybe it's happening all over. I don't believe it is.
I'm sorry, Ms. Chisum, that's time.
Thank you. Okay. I didn't even think I could talk the whole thing, but okay.
If you can finish your thought, if you're still speaking, you can finish your thought. You're on mute. You're on mute.
I apologize. I'm through. I was just on one, so that, you know, no, I'm through. Thank you so much for your time.
No problem.
And for listening.
No problem, Ms. Denise. If you do, if you're having trouble contacting your alder, you can email the board or the board president. They are usually good for following up and we can see if we can maybe send a connected email to get you in touch with your alderwoman. And to your other points, very well heard and very well received. I think that completes all of our public engagement.
Yes.
Excellent. Okay, so again, just a big thank you to all of the public members who, do any alders who are here have any final comments that they wanted to give? Okay, great. So thanks to all the members of the public who showed up this afternoon. I know this was a long meeting covering two topics in one. It's not the easiest, but I really felt like these two topics needed to be in conversation with each other. So I was very intentional about doing it how we did. But thank you to President Cousins, Vice President Davis, to Mr. Ogilvy, to Mr. Koller for being here today and joining us. And we're about to go into summer recess until September 13th, 2024. So I hope that we will use this time to think of all the priority ideas that have been presented to us in the last few months. We were very intentional about trying to dive through the five top ideas before going on recess so that we could continue to think and have conversations with us. And with that, we will-
I'm sorry, Chairwoman Sonye. We did have six written comments that are in the Google Drive.
Okay, excellent. Well, of course, my colleagues and I can feel free to browse that and take a look. And with that, I would just move that we will reconvene Committee of the Whole on September 10th at 3:30 PM here in the Kennedy Room. So for folks trying to figure out when are the meetings, we always have Committee of the Whole meeting on the first Tuesday of every month. So however that falls, that'll be interesting because the board reconvenes that week. So we'll be on pause for a little second, but we'll be back on September 10th. And I guess just all in favor of us, or can I just say, like, we're just going to motion to the, okay, excellent. And with that, just thank you all for coming and meeting adjourned.